Good evening and welcome to this Prior Lake City Council meeting of Monday, February 6th. If you would please stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. ... One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to our meeting. The first item on our agenda is, of course, the public forum. The public forum is that opportunity for those in the council chambers that would like to come before the council and share anything that is on your mind or of importance here. The only items that are precluded are if a hearing has been scheduled for an item and/or if a hearing has taken place. Of course, the importance there is that all testimony is received at the same time. With those exceptions, what I'd like to do is just limit testimony up for four minutes. What I'll do at the three-minute mark is I'll just hold up an index finger to signify. You have one minute remaining, and I'd ask that you conclude your comments. So with that, we do have three that have signed up ahead, and the first is Mr. Dean Swanson. Dean, invite you to come before the council, and again, we look forward to your comments. Button on the base of the microphone, a red light, green says, "Please speak," so we'll look forward to your testimony.
Thank you for having us again, and thank you for the workshop earlier. I guess, just on a personal note, I'm still kind of hung up on the whole R1 zoning of the County 42, I'm sorry, Dean Swanson, 14080 Hidden View Road. I'm still personally kind of hung up on the R1 zoning issues that seem to be just kind of glossed over a little bit. It's like, well, there are four individuals planned for this house, unrelated, and that is true, but we seem to be ignoring the fact that there's going to be a support staff in this house. There's going to be a budget of over $400,000 from what the county is going to be voting on tomorrow. How does that fit in an R1, just four people living together? We've got over $400,000 budget of support staff, traffic going in and out of that house on a driveway that's deemed unsafe, and that's why they wanted to buy the house and tear the house down, get rid of that driveway. They have conceded that they're not going to move the driveway. Well, you've got a driveway that's already dangerous. This house and its support staff is going to, what, five times, 10 times the amount of traffic in and out of that dangerous driveway, but they're not going to relocate it. Something doesn't add up. So I would urge you to reconsider at least drafting a moratorium. Don't have to send it just yet, but at least draft a moratorium on the basis of looking into this R1 zoning, how this house fits into that R1 zoning, especially with the traffic situations. It's as simple as that. If the county takes it as a trigger to do other actions, well, they were going to do plenty of stuff without our interactions to begin with. It's only because the residents got together, we found out about this, and with your help, we have gotten some concessions out of them. But there's certainly not any concessions that make it feel any better on that street, on Hidden View Road, on Bayview Road. It doesn't feel any better. So I ask that you do that again, is to at least draft a moratorium to look at zoning. And while you're drafting the moratorium on zoning, let's look at the actual zoning. Let's redefine the zoning so this doesn't happen again. So if we don't look at updating the zoning and updating the standards now, what's to stop the next one? We keep talking about, well, maybe for the next time, you know, we can do something better. Well, let's start today. And if starting that process now helps this house, well, that's even better. That's just gravy. And I don't know what to say about the whole county, the bullet points and their concessions, just because, again, from the start, the county has been almost combative with us. So, you know, pardon my pessimism with their concessions. Another thought that some of the residents had was perhaps we take those five or six concessions that they mentioned and use that as a negotiation point. We need perhaps add a few more items on there. Someone had a great idea about making only a reentry house for women incarcerated. It's just that it would be women and people only rather than the male incarcerated. So that would be a possibility because there seems to be statistics that there's maybe less reoffenses with women populations. Maybe we can also ask them for longer terms, more than the 30, 60, 90 days, which seems to be a very rushed schedule. I don't know how anyone, even trying their hardest, is going to be able to reenter society the way they hope in just 30, 60, or 90 days. So a longer stay would seem to be appropriate. And the moratorium would also give us time to look at more data from these types of homes, not just the Shakopee House, because the data from the Shakopee House seems to be, shall we say, skewed or questionable as well. So it'd be interesting to get more data from other counties and other houses that are actually running programs like this. And according to the Damascus contract with Scott County, they can terminate it at any time that they want. So that's another option for Scott County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Matt Fulton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Fulton, 14080 Shady Beach Trail. Thanks for the work session tonight. That was really informative. Thanks, Jason and David, for putting together that background information. That was helpful. I left the work session disappointed. It strikes me that you're hesitant, the council is hesitant about taking any initiative for fear of something else happening and the state licensure being one of those kinds of things. I'm not certain that the state licensure is such a bad idea. I also agree, Mayor, with your contention that maybe we need to be spending more time trying to modify the state statutes on what that really means, because these reentry homes are kind of a unique land use, and they don't kind of cleanly fit into the guidelines right now. The city needs to be notified when something like this comes into your community. The only control that you have is your zoning code. None of you will disagree with me, this kind of land use should not be in a R1 zone that is predominantly investor-owned residential homes. I'm not arguing against the social goals of what is trying to be accomplished, but you want to make sure that the issues that are creating challenges for these kind of land uses are minimized. You need to be close to a bus line. You need to be in close to employment centers. It's better if you're in a mixed rental kind of a land use. You have zoning codes right now that has state license for residential facilities. You allow them in your zoning code, but you have permitted with conditions. This is the same kind of a situation where you want to be able to provide for guiding this kind of a land use in your community with appropriate conditions that you set, allowing just for it to go forward without taking an assertive action. To me, as a resident, says that you're really kind of avoiding, you're kind of just, you're allowing this one, and you'll worry about it the next time comes down the road. The way this project has progressed doesn't give me any assurance that the county is not going to do the same thing. And you've got a gentleman's agreement, which, by the way, goes against the transportation goals that that property was originally purchased for. You've now precluded the closure of those driveways, which I think is also not a public good. So the actions or the discussion that you had tonight kind of lends against meeting those transportation goals. I would not hesitate with being more aggressive and being more assertive and taking a stance of a moratorium, which allows you to then put those guidance, those standards in place, that you can get zoning regulations in place to guide this kind of land use in the community. I think that's your responsibility. I wouldn't worry about the potential impact of a state license. There may actually be positives on that state licensure. I just wouldn't, as a council, I think I would rather you be proactive than, you know, the impact of us now having to be reactive on something that's clearly going to impact the attractiveness of our neighborhood and our ability to transact property in our neighborhood just because of the type of a land use that it is. So with that, I'll leave you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fulton. Ms. Cassie Johnson.
Okay, I really am going to bring a stool one time. Cassandra Johnson, 14104 Hidden View Road, Northeast. I agree with Matt. It was disappointing to leave the work session. I appreciate the time and the efforts. You guys talked about the mental, emotional exhaustion that you have felt. I can tell you, time's a thousand, and that's where we're at. This is 24/7 for some of us, lost sleep trying to figure out what our next step is. We bought our house as our forever home with plans of, all right, there's a bedroom on the main floor when I'm old and can't do the stairs, right? Now, am I moving? What am I going to do? What am I going to let my 12-year-old do? Can I let her walk down the street? Can I not? And you don't want to live in fear. And so some of those things, like, this could happen, yep, one in a million, she could get hit by a car, or my house could get broken into, absolutely. But the other adult thing is that you're proactive, and you think about, and you're figuring those things out. So the mental exhaustion that you guys are feeling amplified, and that's where we're at. I also have very much concerns about taking these good faith efforts of the county. I ask you, who wasn't involved and brought to the table to discuss this? We were told they didn't have to notify you or us. So fool me once, shame on me. Fool me twice, it's shame on us. So these good faith mean nothing to me now. The trust is broken, and I encourage you to pause and reflect on that, and how can you take it at face value? The other thing is, is if you go ahead and do a response letter, we urge you to say straight out, flat out, we disagree with this use of this home. Black and white, lay it out, and then acknowledge, with these concessions that you've made, here's some additional ones. But to be able to put it in writing that you all disagree with this, I think speaks volumes and also helps rebuild the trust with your citizens that have elected you into these seats. My other concern is about the city, or the, what do they call it, the team, the community team, two residents to eight city and county officials. I can tell you, if you are not a public speaker, or if you've not worked in the city or any of those things, it is going to be very hard to speak up in those forums, and how can our voices be heard if there's two of us? One person's not there, and now I'm sitting in a room with seven other people that I have no relationship with, and it takes time. We'll build that. But that's not setting that up for success from the community side. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That is all that we had for those that have signed up. Are there any others that would like to come before the council and speak during the forum?
Hi, my name's Jennifer. I live at 14060 Hidden View Road. I'm sorry, I thought I'd at least get through my name. I live right across the street from this home. I have a seven-year-old daughter who's in first grade. I have a four-year-old son and a two-year-old son. This home is a bird's-eye view into my bedroom, my nursery, my seven-year-old daughter's room, my playroom, and my dining room. I would not feel comfortable having my kids outside. I would not feel comfortable being alone in my own home. I don't trust the county, as all of you have agreed, none of us do, and what they've done. I would prefer that it be licensed and be monitored by someone other than the people that have been in charge thus far. I'm not going to go into detail about their misappropriation of funds and the process they followed and the policy that none of you agree with, none of you agree with. You all said that in that workshop. And if I was sitting there and you were standing here, would you say, let's agree and let the county bully us into these conceived concessions? Or would you want someone to stand up for you and for your children? I know you all have children. And we're now having to think about moving when there's 7% interest rates, and I wouldn't feel comfortable not telling people buying my house what's across the street. And so I implore you to think about this on a personal level, not on a what the county has said behind closed doors to you, or what you've been convinced from other people, but what you know is right in your heart. And do something, and speak up now, not at the next house, not when the next thing comes down the line, right now. You have the resources, you know it's wrong, so do something.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come before the city council this evening? I'll go ahead and conclude the forum if I could. I'm going to actually, and again, thank you so much for the testimony this evening. Just for context, potentially, Manager Waddell, before we address some of the feedback we received, if you would encapsulate as concisely as possible what was discussed at workshop, what were some of the things that the council discussed, that of course, here at the forum, we've received comments in regards to that discussion. And then, following that, if you would, maybe have yourself or David address, are there any zoning items that we could have or could put in place that would have precluded such a use? If I could, City Manager Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors and members of the audience. So at tonight's work session, we did discuss the response letter that the city received as a direct result of the city council sending them a letter requesting that the house be repurposed. The response that we got back from Scott County was that they appreciated the city council's letter, but they are still going to move forward with using the house as a reentry home. That being said, they would agree to the following five conditions. They would agree that the clients that would be living there would have historical ties to Scott County. There would be no sexual offenders placed in that home. They would agree to never relocate the driveway from its current access on 42. There had been previous discussions about relocating the driveway out the rear of the property to the existing neighborhood streets, so that would not take place. They agreed to the creation of a community committee that was mentioned during the public forum comments, that would have representatives that would meet on a semi-regular basis to discuss how the house is operating. And lastly, they agreed to additional landscaping barriers and screening. Oh, and there's one thing that wasn't a bullet point, but what was in the text was that they agreed to additional hours of supervision from the organization they're contracting with to manage the home. Damascus Way, they would increase the number of hours that would be there. So we reviewed that letter with the council, and we talked through where the city council could go from here based on that. And so a moratorium was discussed, as was requested by several of the residents this evening, and we've heard from that, that same concern in the past, which the city council could pursue. However, the consequences of that would potentially be, the county has told us that if we issued a moratorium, they would just pursue a state licensure. And a state license would supersede a moratorium, so even if we had a moratorium in place, the state licensure would supersede it, so the moratorium would be no longer applicable. And if they did pursue state licensure, then there are certain things that they've agreed to in their letter that would potentially come off the table as far as things that they've offered up. For example, instead of having four people in the home, they could now have six. Whether they would have sex offenders there or not, that, they wouldn't commit to that anymore. The driveway relocation, all those things that had been offered as a way to try to meet in the middle, those potentially would come off the table. So there is a lot of risk that we discussed with moving forward with a moratorium, and that's why the direction at the council work session was not to go down that path. There's also discussion about our zoning code and our short-term rental ordinances, and if there was things we could do with our zoning. And ultimately, again, if the county pursues state licensure, anything we do with our zoning code, again, gets superseded by state statute. So there was discussion about, you know, is this something we can handle at the city level, or is this really something that we need to be pursuing with our state legislators at the state level to look for change? Because we can do everything we can within our powers, but ultimately, power flows from the state down to the county and down to the cities, and we're at the lowest level, We also discussed, you know, continuing to press for this use to be changed, consistent with the letter that council sent, that it would be used for a homeless family rather than used as a reentry home. The county has made it very clear in their letter to us that that is not going to be an option for them, and that they are going to continue to move down this path. So at the end of the discussion, after walking through all those alternatives and understanding what authority we do have at the city level, the direction was to craft a response to the county to memorialize the conditions that they outlined in their letter stating that, just basically making sure that those are locked in so that they're on record, they'll be recorded against the property here, the city and our, on our software programming, so that future staff, future councils will know the conditions that were agreed to on that house. And, yeah, that was the direction we've received from council. So related to the zoning, maybe I would turn that over to our city attorney to comment on.
Oh, thank you, Manager Waddell. You know, I guess as far as the zoning, I would say, first of all, the zoning authority is effectively preempted by the state statute that says that group homes shall be, state licensed group homes shall be permitted use in R1 districts and cities. So the city really, if the facility gets licensed, the city has no zoning authority to attempt to prohibit that use. It's required by state. You know, certainly, we talk with the legislature about changing that state statute, and some cities are doing that, and will probably continue to do that. And as far as, I mean, I won't speak for the council. I don't, my view is not that the council is afraid to go up against the county. It's more that the county is not legally required to offer any of these terms that they're offering. And I would say the council's risk, or the council might be afraid of none of these applying so that there would be sex offenders placed in this neighborhood, there would be access to the home through the neighborhood. I would say the council is, by this decision, is probably trying to look out for the interests of the residents as best they can under the circumstances. And certainly, you know, it's an option to sue the county, try to go into litigation. The outcome is uncertain, so... But one thing that is certain is if it's a state licensed facility, the city has no authority to prohibit that by zoning. So that's black and white state statute. The council is not missing an opportunity or refusing to exercise authority that it has. There's no authority on that point.
Thank you. One other question that came up in the forum testimony was in regards to composition on that committee and representation. Again, Manager Waddell, can I direct this one to you?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilors and members of the audience. I definitely appreciated the comment on the composition of having two residents and then all the rest being city or county staff. That intuitively makes a lot of sense, and I think that is definitely a conversation I will have with the county to see if we can modify that composition to make it more balanced, to have more resident representation on that committee. So I think that's something we can definitely work towards.
We also heard testimony, Manager Waddell, relative to the tone of our letter, and being careful as to not have any response, the county be seen as, we agree with the use. We heard that in testimony. That was also conversation that took place in the workshop, that we wanted to be careful in terms of what any communication would be, but our intent was to really have a memorandum to codify what had been put on the table to ensure implementation. But if you want to comment on the tone of, how we indeed communicate.
No, thank you, Mayor and councilors. That's exactly what was discussed in the work session as well. So I think having a statement at the beginning of the letter noting that the city does not agree with this use would be something we could definitely incorporate. That was the consistent message that we heard from council during the work session was, yeah, none of the councilors agreed to that proposed use. Again, under the circumstances, our authority is limited, and so we've done the best we could with the resources and the authority we have, but making sure we document that in the letter, we can certainly do that.
I guess what I would do at this time, although not customary, but council, if there's any comments that you individually would like to make, as indeed, we all did have a conversation workshop, I'd quickly open up the floor, but I believe Manager Waddell and Mr. Kendall fully captured what occurred, but nonetheless, if there's any that would like to add, seeing none, then I would like to go ahead and move along in our agenda, and that is to really move to the approval of the agenda itself. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Braid, a second by Councilmember Churchill to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to item four, and that is for the meeting minutes, the approval of the January 18th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Council, any modifications, revisions to those meeting minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
So moved. Burkhardt.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Burkhardt, and a second by Councilmember Churchill on those meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Abstain.
And we have one, we have an affirmative for all and an abstain from Braid. Next item up is our consent agenda. I'll go ahead and hand that one off to City Manager Waddell for his introduction as well as the items we force this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and members of the audience. Our consent agenda is for those items that are considered routine or non-controversial, they're placed all together on the consent agenda. So with a single motion and a second and a vote from the council, all the items on the consent agenda are approved at once. If there is something on the consent agenda that the council wants to pull off for separate consideration, it would be removed this evening and placed under item 10 on the agenda. So the items we have on the consent agenda this evening are as follows. Approval of the claims listing, resolution accepting donations and grants to the city during the fourth quarter 2022, resolution approving transferring ownership of city-owned real property to Prior Lake Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 6208, a resolution approving a temporary liquor license for the Prior Lake VFW on March 18th, 2023, a resolution approving the City of Prior Lake 2023 pay equity report, and finally, a resolution approving the purchase of radios for the fire department.
Thank you so much, Manager Waddell. Counsel, are there any items we force this evening that you ask be removed and taken up under item 10 on our agenda? Seeing or hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved. Burkhardt, seconds.
We have a motion by Councilmember Braid, and a second by Councilwoman Burkhardt to approve as submitted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Counsel, are there any comments that you would like to make in regards to the items we just approved this evening? I have one. I would like to comment on item 5B, and that is, again, the SMSC is a valued partner in all areas of public safety, and I want to thank the SMSC for their generosity in being not only that partner, but also in full-on support of our efforts. So thank you to the SMSC. That brings us to item 7, which is a public hearing, which is a resolution approving an off-sale liquor license for Adelweiss Bakery. And I'd see if I have City Manager Waddell for that item.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors and members of the audience. So tonight, we do have the public hearing for approving an off-sale liquor license for Adelweiss Bakery. Adelweiss Bakery opened in April of 2005, primarily functioning then as a bakery, coffee, and lunch restaurant. In May of last year, they expanded their offerings, and now they offer on-sale wine and strong beer and hors d'oeuvres, and it's more for the evening hours, and so it's been a nice addition to our downtown. So now they are looking at expanding, again, their offerings to offer off-sale liquor to their patrons that visit their establishment. So tonight, we would request- So tonight, we would request that, if there's any questions of staff, you let me know, but other than that, we are here to hold a public hearing and, and take any comments we might have on the application.
Counselor, are there any questions for Manager Waddell to, to, to address prior to opening the public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Bray, a second by Councilor Lake, to open the public hearing on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? That motion carries. The hearing is open at 7:29 PM. Is there anyone that would like to come before the council this evening and provide testimony on this hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Burkhardt, seconds.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Bray, and a second by Councilor Burkhardt to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. The hearing is closed at 7:30. Counselor, is there any comment that you would like to make on this item? Counselor Bray.
No, I mean, this is pretty straightforward, excited for the, the new addition and the continued expansion of Adalwey's, so thank you for your continued investment. The only question, quick question I had is, the period in the agenda report is March 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2023, and that's because we have the, the renewals happening then, correct? I just wanted to, okay.
Any additional comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution issuing an off-sale liquor license for Adalwey's Bakery for the period of March 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Bray, a second by Councilmember Churchill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries. That brings us to item 9A on our business, which is Adoption of a City of Prior Lake Strategic Plan 2023. And I can see we've got Assistant Manager Olson.
Council, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to present the strategic plan. We have a presentation, and I'm not sure if it is. Is it up? Okay. Okay, thanks, Casey. So the item before you tonight is for adoption of the 2023-2026 Strategic Plan. Why do we have a strategic plan? It's important for the city to set the direction for our long-term planning, and it helps city leaders focus on the important areas and identify what those areas are for prioritizing budgets, work plans, and accountability through performance management. The city has had a strategic plan in place since 2002, and the most recent update was in 2017, so we were due for a refresh. This was a robust process that kicked off in April of 2022, and you, there is a timeline attached here on this slide. I'll get into specifics on what the components are, and we finished most of the work in September 2022, worked on the report, and we are before you today seeking adoption of the strategic plan. There is robust community engagement involved in this strategic plan. The strategic plan was not made in a vacuum of, of just staff or just elected officials. We tried very hard to reach out and engage as many residents as possible to help us define what the priorities for the future are. We conducted a SWOT analysis, a strength, weakness, opportunity, and threat analysis, an environmental scan. We had a community survey that went out to over 2,800 residents. We had several focus groups that involved our advisory board members, small businesses, an internal survey of all city staff, our paid-on-call firefighters, all of our advisory board members, and then we also held multiple retreats with the city council and the staff. And the result of that work was our strategic plan. When we had our retreat with the city council, it was decided that the work that we did in 2017 to identify our vision was still applicable today, that the vision statement created in 2017, we could continue moving forward with, which is Prior Lake is a vibrant and welcoming lifelong community, offering a high quality of life and a small-town feel. And I'd like to mention, even though we conducted this work in 2022, we were fortunate that at the city council retreat, councilmember-elect at the time, Blake was able to participate and help us with the development of the plan. So there are four key pri, four key sections or elements that base the plan. The strategic priorities, which we will, I will get to later in the presentation, are what is, what are the things that are most important to us over the next few years? The key outcomes that we identified is where do we want to be? We can identify what's important, but if we don't identify where, where we want to be, or how we're going to measure it, this, the plan won't, won't work as well as it could. So we identified key outcomes, targets, and then the specific initiatives that staff will undertake to meet the targets, outcomes, and ultimately the strategic priorities. So there are five strategic priorities. The first is around financial sustainability for a fiscally responsible community. The second is well-managed growth, and it's growth that meets community needs, stable and sustainable infrastructure that are systems that support reliable service delivery, public safety for a safe community, and high-quality parks and trails for a community that values the natural environment. So those three, five strategic priorities are the framework for the next three years. So real quickly, financial sustainability, our key outcomes in that strategic priority area are, include financial stability in all city funds, adequate resources to fund our capital improvement program, and financial policies that guide decision-making. For well-managed growth, we heard loud and clear from all of the ways we gathered input that downtown vitality is critical for the future. We need fiscally responsible residential growth and adequate, and adequate supply of commercial and industrial land to take some of the pressure off the residences and the tax base. For stable and sustainable infrastructure, our key outcomes, we want quality street conditions, a complete understanding of what our infrastructure needs, so everything that's on top of the street to below the street, we need to understand the condition of those elements so we can plan for the future, and then an adequate public works facility. Our maintenance center is quite old. Jason, I don't know if you know what year it was built, but it looks like a cabin, if you've never been there, and it's, it's ready for a, a refresh, and we're out of space for a lot of the vehicles that we've purchased. And then public safety, our key outcomes, we are establishing, and we want to establish a full-time fire department. We need safe and stable buildings through an inspection program, and then a well-trained police department. For the police department, about 60% of our staff are police officers, have less than five years of experience. Our sergeants are, have been in their roles for either three, about three years or less. We have a brand-new police chief. So training and making sure that this new, exciting, well-qualified staff is well-placed to move into the future. And then finally, our high-quality parks and trails. We need a clear direction for the future of our 52 park, 54 parks and trails, and then what is the community support for parks and trails funding so we can plan appropriately for the future? So I encourage everybody at home who is watching this to please go to our website. This is just a snapshot, a little screen grab of what you'll find in, within the plan. I've only talked about the strategic priorities and outcomes, but you can look on the plan online and look and see what the target, targets are and what the strategic initiatives are. And finally, the next steps will be modifying our agenda reports to include the new strategic priorities. We will be developing action plans as staff to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to what we said we were going to do, and we'll work with the city manager to develop a reporting mechanism for regular updates to the city council and the public so we can let everyone know how, how we're doing toward the completion of our plan. So like I said, priorlakeMN.gov, you can look for the strategic plan there, and we encourage everyone to take some time to read it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Olson. Counselor, are there any questions for Director Olson on our presentation on the strategic plan? Any comments? Seeing none, a motion to adopt.
Well done, Lori, and, and the rest of the staff. I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 to 2026 strategic plan.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Burkhardt, and a second by Councilor Briggs to approve the strategic plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That brings us to item 9B, which is approval of an ordinance amending Prior Lake City Code Section 1142, Commercial and Town Center Performance Standards in City Code Section 1144, Architectural Design. And now I see we have Community Development Director McCabe. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. As the mayor mentioned, the purpose of this agenda item is to consider amendments to City Code Section 1142, Commercial and Town Center Performance Standards, as well as 1144, our architectural design standards. A little background, starting last summer and fall, city staff had a few commercial proposals come through that we couldn't quite make, make meet our design guidelines, and these were, two of the buildings of the three were established uses in other, in several other communities throughout the metro. So we took a look at our architectural design standards to see where we could make improvements, provide a little bit more flexibility. We took that discussion to our planning commission. They talked about it during a regular meeting. They actually had a separate work session to discuss the architectural design standards, and then held a public hearing in January and recommended unanimously that the city council approve the proposed amendments. The amendments are all included in your packets. The only major change to Section 1142 was removing the town center design standards from that section and relocating them to 1144, the reason being now town center design standards, commercial, industrial, and multifamily are all in the same location. In 1144, currently, our code includes a combined section that is multifamily, commercial, and industrial. So the, the major change here is we have now three separate categories, one for multifamily buildings, one for commercial, business, park, and industrial, and a third for town center design standards. So as far as multifamily, the changes included removing specific language that didn't apply to multifamily. So previously, when they're included with commercial and industrial, there were specific roofing materials, outdoor storage areas, above-ground fuel tanks that don't apply to multifamily. Those were removed. We also added in language allowing fiber cement siding as an approved building material, provided no more than 50% of any wall abutting a right-of-way, or no more than 75% of walls that do not abut right-of-way are used of that material. Additional architectural accent materials were added as permitted material, up to 25% of each wall, and then we identified a few materials that were prohibited, as well as including a color section to require subtle neutral building colors. For the commercial, business, park, and industrial design standards, again, fiber cement siding was added as an approved material, provided no more than 50% of walls along the right-of-way, or 75% of walls that are not on the right-of-way. The same architectural accent materials were added as permitted uses up to 25% of the wall. The same prohibited material uses were identified, and then the same color section was added for, again, subtle neutral colors on the building. In the town center, currently, our ordinance requires an 80%, 20% mix, so 80% of facades in the entire town center that abut public right-of-way are to be constructed of brick, stone, or glass, and allowing for 20% of accent materials. That requirement is proposed to remain in the town center, but only for properties on Main Avenue and Dakota Street. For towns, so again, for town center buildings with frontage on Main Avenue or Dakota Street, 80% of the facades would be brick, stone, glass. The additional materials have been provided for that other 20%. Side and rear facades not abutting public right-of-way shall be the 60%, 40% requirement, so 60% brick, stone, glass, 40% accent materials. That is the same as in today, but that would only apply to Main Avenue and Dakota moving forward if this were approved. For town center properties, which is our downtown district, without frontage on Main or Dakota Street, they would have, be allowed 50% of facades to be constructed of brick, stone, or glass, and then new materials have been added to the definitions for the remaining 50%. We also would allow pre-finished metal or wood as architectural enhanced materials, up to 25% of facades. So building walls not abutting, abutting public right-of-way would have a minimum of 35% of principal materials and allowed a maximum of 65. So if they're not on the street, there's greater flexibility with the materials that can be used. Also, we added a requirement for a minimum of two design elements, which is not overly difficult to achieve, and what we're looking for there is contrasting colors, varying wall heights, varying wall depths, use of glass, enhanced entrances, and similar. So our city code identifies a policy for amendments, so in case of amendments to the zoning code text, there is a public need for the amendment, or the amendment will accomplish one or more purposes of the zoning code, or the adoption of the amendment is consistent with state or federal requirements. In this case, staff believes that these amendments help accomplish several purposes of the zoning code, which including maintain stability of business and industrial areas of the community, promoting appropriate and orderly development of business and industrial areas, enhancing the aesthetic character and appearance of the city, providing effective administration and amendments to the zoning code, and this represents a continuing system of review of the code to ensure it will be amended to meet changing needs of the community. Also included on this slide is a few objectives identified in the 2040 Vision and Strategic Plan that will be accomplished, including intentional land use planning to facilitate commercial development, to expand the tax base, preserving and enhancing Prior Lake small-town feel, and exploring ways to encourage downtown as a vibrant destination. The recommendation of staff in the planning commission is a motion and a second to approve the ordinances amending Sections 1142 and 1144, as well as approval of a resolution adopting a summary of the ordinance to be published. And counsel, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Director, Director McCabe, thank you so much for your presentation. Counsel, are there any questions for Director McCabe or Thomas? Mr. Lake.
Just to clarify, would that change, that change would not affect the immediate downtown, correct?
The primary change for the immediate downtown area would be for properties in the town center district that are not on Main Avenue or Dakota Street. There would, those areas would be provided a greater flexibility with approved building materials.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bray.
Well, I think this is a, a nice amendment that, you know, we've heard a lot about, at least over the past six years since, since I've been here, that I think it's, it's business-friendly and ensures new buildings will aesthetically still look good and maintain the brains, the brand standards of Prior Lake and our, our small-town feel. So I know you put a lot of work into it, Director McCabe, and, you know, thank you for your efforts in the planning commissions as well.
I would concur. Thank you so much, Director McCabe, especially knowing that some of the developments that are coming our way have some national standards and certainly are flexibility in yet ensuring that our downtown standards are what we'd like them to be, to thread that needle. You nailed it. So, counsel, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 1142 and Section 1144 of the Prior Lake City Code, and approval of a resolution adopting the summary of ordinance and ordering the publication of said summary.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bray, and a second by Councilor Lake. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That brings us to our Councilmember liaison updates, and if I may, Councilmember Lake, please lead us on.
Yes, on January 19th, I attended the CEC, Community Engagement Committee. February 1st, I attended a Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting. On February 3rd, I attended the Scale Executive Board Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Counselor Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. On January 25th, I had the LLE Housing Co-Chair Committee Meeting. On the 1st, I attended the Chamber Board Meeting. On the 3rd, I had my gender review, and today I had Mobility Transit Advisory Board Committee.
Thank you so much, Counselor Churchill. Councilwoman Burkhardt.
January 24th, I had Minnesota Valley Transit Association Meeting. January 25th, the Legislative Meet and Greet for the Highway 169 Quarter Coalition Down at the Capitol for several hours, a very successful event with a lot of attendees. On January 25th, had the Minnesota Valley Transit Association Board of Directors Meeting. February 30th, had my gender review, and February 6th, had the MBTA Management Committee Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Burkhardt. Counselor Bray.
Mayor, members of the council, on January 24th, I met with Commissioner Brecky. Mayor, members of the council, on January 24th, I met with Commissioner Brecky to discuss numerous options and conversations about annexation and this housing that we have off of 42. And then on February 3rd, I attended my gender review. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Counsel Bray. On the 19th of January, City Manager and I had a State of the City presentation of the Lions Club. On the 24th of January, I met with the Rotary Club to discuss their signature project process that they're going to be embarking upon. On the 26th of January, had the opportunity in doing a podcast with Secretary Treasurer Kirk Stratton, discussing our city travel relationship. On the 27th, I had a meeting with School Board Chair Amy Crosby. And then on February 2nd, meeting along with Manager Waddell with the MLC Housing Subcommittee meeting. One thing I would like to also share, very exciting news, Senator Pratt is a chief author on a piece of legislation that was released since we last spoke that specifically seeks to ensure that the costs of growth reside with developers. And to me, this is, well, three years' worth of effort that we are moving forward. So that concludes my comments. Manager Waddell, is there anything you'd like to add?
Mayor, councilors, I have nothing further to add this evening.
With that, counsel, I would entertain that final motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Bray to adjourn, and a second by Counselor Lake. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries. Meeting stands adjourned at 7:50.